Hello.
Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Monday, April eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Dennison.
Here.
Whedon.
Here.
Bianski.
Yep.
Money.
Present.
Swem.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Accept a motion to approve the agenda?
Sean, I'll second.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yep.
Money.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving now to public comment and agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Okay, let's move down to the consent agenda. Someone would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
Dennison.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Scheduled matters from the floor and introduction of chunks.
All right. Good evening, commissioners and public. My name is Randy Hendrickson, one six one five two Mercent Court in Buchanan, as well as property owner, three two four East Dewey. I'm here tonight to talk to you guys about a very historic structure located, and many of you might be familiar with, located on the grounds of the old Clark Equipment Complex. I'm here as a property owner and supporting force behind what we hope to be a very unique opportunity for the community. I will not steal Haley and Justin's thunder, but I would like to ask for a little bit of grace with the timing, the allotment of time for this, just because there's a lot to communicate, and I know this portion of the agenda sometimes is restricted for time. So as I turn things over to Haley and Justin, just please give us a little bit of time to talk about this. I would encourage you guys to ask a lot of questions if you have them, and we'd be happy to come back to you and present in the future, once we have more information. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Haley and Justin Jones. You may have seen Haley on many billboards around the community for her real estate role.
Hi, I'm Haley Jones, and this is Justin Jones, one four five three four Main Street, Buchanan. So, bringing neighbors together one scoop at a time. For over fifteen years, the dream of owning an ice cream shop has been in the back of my mind. After earning my degree in small business and entrepreneurship from S M C in twenty seventeen, and spending five years in the real estate world, I knew it was time to turn that dream into a reality. My husband, Justin Jones, a proud graduate of U N O H's diesel mechanic program in twenty sixteen, has been the chunk behind my dreams. We're not passionate about just scoops and cones. We're passionate about community. Our goal is to bring people together in a happy, family-friendly environment, whether you're out for a walk on the trail or enjoying a day feeding the ducks. We invite you to stop by and indulge in some of our delicious ice cream. When we discovered the nineteen sixteen guard shack, its potential and charm were undeniable. Our goal is to lovingly restore the historic gem to its original splendor, honoring its storied past while crafting a lively gathering spot for our community and ice cream lovers alike. We were drawn to this distinctive location not only for its historical significance, but also for the unique opportunity it presents. It's more than just a structure. It's a cherished part of our town's heritage that we're eager to rejuvenate. With Randy by our side, there is no one better suited to help us get this accomplished. With his expertise and enthusiasm, we're excited to collaborate and create a truly special ice cream shop that pays homage to the past while embracing the future. The reason why we are choosing Moveville for our ice cream is because they are Michigan-based. The ice cream has a seventeen percent butterfat content, making the ice cream more creamy. They only use beet sugar, have seventy flavors with a great selection of non-dairy and sugar-free options, which we plan to carry. We plan to open June first, twenty twenty-four. We will be seasonal, closing in mid-October. Operating days will be Tuesday through Sunday, closed on Mondays. This will be a walk-up ice cream shop hosting twelve flavors that get rotated out every few weeks. As we look ahead, it's not just about serving ice cream. It's about creating memorable experiences and fostering community spirit. One of our exciting future plans includes hosting events right on Dewey Street, managing bustling gathering while we close the street to traffic, transforming it into a lively space while collaborating with other businesses. Our location offers the advantage of ample parking, making it convenient for everyone to join the fun. We envision these events as a way to bring people together and not shut down a major street downtown. Anybody have any questions?
Why chunks?
I, so, my husband and I got together his eighth grade year, my ninth grade year, and I've always called him Chunk. And so, and without him, it wouldn't be possible to do so. I had to name him after him.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Yeah, good luck.
I love it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I think now we're moving down to new business. Resolution twenty twenty-four point oh four slash eleven, a resolution prescribing compensation for the election workers for the city of Buchanan.
Hi, yeah, so we haven't updated any kind of pay rate for our election workers since October of two thousand eighteen. I did a little bit of a study, kind of reaching out to local clerks to see what they're offering. My biggest thing is my, I have an older generation of workers who I love very much, and they do an amazing job, but I'm trying to get a couple of younger generation in there to help with the computer, because it is, it can be difficult. So we're looking at raising it up, and we want to keep people coming back, and it's a long day. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of training. And we're just trying to keep our wages competitive with the surrounding communities, so. Any questions?
So what's the new rate going to be?
So the, depending on, the chairperson, sixteen dollars an hour, election inspectors at fourteen, an hourly rate for fourteen dollars for training, receiving board would go up to sixteen.
Well, can you tell me what it was?
It was twelve dollars an hour for election inspectors and fourteen for chairs.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dot zero four slash eleven as presented.
I'll support.
Any discussion?
Who all did you check with, Callan?
I, City of Saint Joe, City of New Buffalo, City of Benton Harbor, and Lincoln Charter Township.
I checked with Niles. It's all about sixteen. What was it in Saint Joe?
Saint Joe, they actually do per day. They do, she was actually looking at changing hers, but right now they do two hundred per day for the worker, two twenty-five for the precinct chair. Then they do a different discounted rate for an A V counting board, because they don't come in as long.
It's usually a fourteen-hour day, though, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it ever, it's still theirs, I think it averages to like fourteen to sixteen.
That's sixteen dollars.
Yeah, and they're actually changing theirs to see, instead of going by day.
So it seems like most of them are sixteen bucks an hour.
Yeah.
Are you trying to break it into shifts, or are you doing the full?
So I normally do a full day, but I will break it into shifts, because I have a couple of people that just can't physically do.
Right.
Split shifts, but I always worry about that, because then what if somebody doesn't show?
Right.
And then I have people leaving, but for the majority, I'll work with people for sure, but usually they don't, they have a mandatory four-hour training that they have to do every two years.
Okay.
And especially like with Presidential coming up, I'm gonna need quite a bit of workers.
What does that run from six to ten on Election Day?
Usually, they were all pretty early last time. They were done by nine, I think the last person left at nine thirty.
So six to nine, fifteen hours?
I'm, with election, with August, it's gonna be at least ten or eleven, I would say. They would get out, so.
I saw in our packet that you said if city workers, if, I'm guessing that as in an emergency, you would have to use a.
Yes.
A regular city worker, and they would just make their regular, normal pay.
A lot of times the alternates are the city hall workers, because I know they'll be here, so if something happened and somebody got into an accident, they're all trained as well, that they can sub in if needed, so.
Cool. But you're recruiting as many, so you don't use city workers?
I actually just got three new ones.
Okay.
The state has a really great tool for us. It's called Michigan Democracy. So it's people who have signed up on the Secretary of State's website, and it gives a location and how far they're willing to travel. So I actually got two out of Bertrand Township. I just got one from Buchanan City today, so, yeah.
Very cool.
We'll see, hopefully a couple more.
Wonderful. Nice. Looks like you're getting a raise.
Yeah, he was getting a raise.
All right. Can we have a roll call, please?
Money?
Yeah, yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Carries.
Moving down to expenditures. Consider approving the expenditures in the amount of forty-four thousand sixty-eight dollars ninety-four cents for April eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Sean also move?
Is there a support?
I'll support.
Discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Mike, you can probably answer me about the dumpster liners.
For all the garbage downtown?
Oh, so they're not really dumpster liners? They're.
Trash bags.
They're garbage bags or fifty?
Five hundred. Oh, the.
What's the number?
What's the number on it?
Five hundred.
How much is it?
It's five hundred dollars. It says, it's under dumpster liners. That's the only reason why I questioned it. So I'm, you're saying it's.
I'm not sure if that's for.
The dirt?
Or if it's for, well, for the wastewater.
Slade.
Do they have to line their dumpsters for, okay, that's fine. And then the other question I have would be for Mr. Gannus. The evidence, the sheets for evidence, can that be downloaded and just printed, you know, per use?
No, those, the sheets have to go physically with the evidence. We have to have a piece of paper. So we do have it on the computer, but we also have to do a piece of paper, because the evidence is moved from place to place.
No, I understand that, but can't you print that evidence paper off to put with the evidence? Rather than actually buy in a form?
Well, we need it in three folds. There's three colored copies, so we understand when we have a pink sheet, a yellow sheet, and a white sheet, where that evidence is through that process.
Okay, gotcha.
So one goes through the report, the other one stays with the evidence, and.
So it's one of the old-fashioned where you're filling out the top one, but it's leaving copies of three.
And triple. And the color copies are the ones that are telling you what it is? All right, that's, and then the only other thing, I talked to Tim about a lot of them, but we're really gonna have to look for different engineers when we go forward on some of these other projects.
Because of Avon Marsh for the.
Well, Avon Marsh and Barton, I mean, it's just constant. And thank you for not putting this on the consent calendar. I'm gonna ask some questions about what we did on the consent calendar tonight, because I missed it, but I'll wait till my comments.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion. We have support. Can we have a roll call, please?
Swem?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to communications.
I just put it on there, because it's the sixteenth annual chili walk, so it's April eleventh from five to six forty-five. It's presented by the chamber, and they said on their website, you gotta meet over at Lehman's. It's five dollars?
Five dollars a spoon. Hopefully the weather holds off. It's not looking too solid at the moment, so. We'll be there rain or shine still.
Did we, did we close the street for that? Did we get a street poll?
Yeah, that was last week.
Yeah.
Usually it's on Wednesdays, though, isn't it?
Nope, it's always Thursday.
Is it a Thursday?
Yeah.
That's a Chambers deal, okay.
So the weather's supposed to be like Thursday?
Like ninety-seven percent rain when I live there. The one day this week.
Oh, it is.
So.
That's all right.
Hopefully it skips.
They make umbrellas. The chili's indoors, so.
That's true.
Okay, moving down to public comment and non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to make a public comment on a non-agenda item, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the minutes.
Good evening. Hugh Hagan, one twenty-two South Detroit. I sound a little bit disjointed. It's because I got a leaky memory and I left my notes at home. It's about sidewalks. I know it's a shared responsibility between the village and the owner, but the sidewalks in Buchanan are really getting pretty desperate shit. And a lot of people have made comments over the last year on this here, and so it's not unique. It comes to my attention that South Bend now has entered a program paying for new sidewalks that are, and I don't expect we're gonna undertake such a thing throughout the village, but I think there should be something done to assist owners on this. In my particular case, I don't know who chopped the tree down, but from, I understand it was the village, and the tree happened to fall on the sidewalk, and it's now like this. And so, that was before we moved in, but that's what, eight, nine years ago now, that that happened, and that's all throughout the village. It's really awful, and I think that was not brought up in your goal meeting here a while back, and I think it's something that should be on your future agenda. That's it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Hugh.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
I'd like to address his public comment.
Well, we can do it in your comments.
Okay.
I was, because I was just gonna address it too.
Okay.
Mary Gilbert.
I got you, Mary. I already got you rolled down.
Oh. You're so quick. So I had to go to the movie section for meetings, because I forgot to come last week. And I was listening to the conversation about the waterfront development, and as it's, as it's going along, I'm thinking, you know, this really is a pretty good idea, and, good job. And then Norma stands up, and she asked her question about guaranteeing whether or not you can protect the land and the water. And I thought, oh, for God's sake, of course they can't, you know, which is true. There's no way you can do that. But I was thinking, that if you turn that question just a little bit to, are we doing everything we can to protect the land and the water, then it's a much more manageable task, and I think you should keep that in mind. So, that made me think about the question I asked last, I want to say September, maybe October, about the lift station, and I asked if, if Anton had agreed to come in every three months and give us a health and wellness report on that lift station, and it's been almost a year now, and he hasn't shown up, then, are we, are we doing everything we can to protect the riverfront development? Because if we fail, a lot of people are gonna stop wanting to give us money, and we don't want that to happen. So, I don't really think I have a question, other than have we heard about that lift station, but, I don't know. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Going once? Going twice? I know, it was Sushar. Took you longer to walk down here, didn't it? Okay, let's move down to executive comments. Our city manager is out of town this week. Let's go to Commissioner Whedon.
I'm good.
Mr. Swem?
Welcome, Chunkies. So excited to have you in town. Can't wait to watch it unfold down there. Mr. Hagan, your answer on sidewalks, so it might not have made the minutes, but we actually did discuss it in that meeting. One of the things we asked is, put something in the budget, so we can start making some headway on that, as far as the strategy isn't developed yet. Just put some money aside, so we can start knocking away at it, basically, so. No answer yet. Hopefully, we'll hear from Tim when we do our budget amendment, probably closer to May. Might have an idea of what that number looks like. That's all I have.
Commissioner Bianski?
Um, to go on with the sidewalk, soon as that article came out, I contacted Tim. He's reaching out to a couple of different cement companies. My opinion is, first come, first share, as far as a split, not a hundred percent, so that we can do more, because if we do a hundred percent, we can only do very few. So it'll probably be a split with the first come, first served. There's been a program down here forever, and we've been talking about fixing sidewalks for a hundred years. But hopefully, we'll get past that stage with this city manager, because he's on it pretty hard. And as far as the landfill or the lift station, I'm no longer on that water and sewer board. I was pretty aggressive about asking about that, and really don't want to go into the in-depth issues on that. You'll have to talk to, I think Larry's on that now, to find out what exactly is going on, because I don't really want to carry on about it publicly too much. I did, you know, I agreed to the consent calendar under, you had a tree friends with giving Mike permission. I would like to retract that. Is there any way of retracting that?
I don't know.
Because, you know, this needs to go to Barb, then it needs to go to the tree friends, then it needs to come to us, because I don't want trees, I mean, Mr. Picard did a really good job, and Rich, can you tell me, did you give, tell Mr. Picard to draw up plans for that pickleball court on the River Street property? Rich?
Yeah.
You did?
No, he was directed to Barb, I think.
Barb told him to, Barb told him to do that?
Okay, yeah, I don't, I've not talked to the gentleman you referred.
Mr. Picard?
Bickard.
Bickard, yeah. I remember Picard.
I can answer real quick. So Rich called me, Dan, and he's in communication with Jeanie from Barb. He wasn't able to make the most recent meeting.
Okay, no, that's good. I just want to make sure we don't plant a bunch of trees down there, and I talked to Brian, and Brian hadn't been contacted. And I really like, you know, as far as planting trees, I thought we were gonna make a decision tonight, so I would like to see this go to Barb, go to the tree friends, and then come back to us before we plant any trees, and I'm gonna make sure I reach out to Barb and, and tree friends, that we give permission, because I'm not against planting trees, but I want to know, so that we're not digging them up after we decide to put playground equipment or something else in one of them parks.
We have a Barb meeting on Wednesday, and I can, I can bring it up, and I can ask Rich Martin to show up to that.
Yeah, he meant, he was, I think he was out of town, but he needed to get a couple of other things coordinated.
But, but we should be able to walk it with him or something and figure out.
Right.
Where to put them, because it's smart.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, the fact that it came to us first, I mean, it's just kind of backwards. Hilltop Creek, it's the Hilltop Creek Side Cafe now. I want to give a shout-out to them. I know you guys came down, but they're opening, hopefully in a month. They put it out on Facebook. I reposted it a couple of times. They ran up against a good old Michigan regulation, but they are hiring now, and they are looking to open by the end of April, first week in May. And then our Mr. Infamous, Famous Mr. Freddie from downtown has got his own series that's gonna start on Hulu next month, and what's the guy's name that interviewed him on the nighttime TV?
Jimmy Kimmel.
Jimmy Kimmel.
Yeah, he's sponsoring the show. So he took a liking to Mr. Freddie, so I wanted to give a house shout-out to Mr. Freddie. If you've ever not met him, it's worth the time.
Mr. Money?
Okay, well, congratulations to Haley and Justin on Chunkies. I'm quite sure that I'll be the.
I think it's just.
One of the first, one of the first Chunkies there. But yeah, it's gonna be, gonna be nice to be able to see something going in there and taking care of that. I did have a couple of questions, but one of the questions Dan brought up about Randy Bickard, I didn't know who Picard was. Randy Bickard, they were gonna look at quite possibly the pickleball court in behind Gene Wesner's house there along that section that runs behind.
In Ravish Park.
Right, and Randy, Randy was gonna look at that, but apparently he's in Florida, so he was gonna do that when he got back. I, I do have a question for Mr. Baker in the back. Is there any way that we can monitor some of the dumpsters that are in town? I happened to be walking through the cemetery the other day, doing my little walk, and some guy rolled up there, and he moved faster than I did, because he unloaded his truck, completely filled the dumpster up at the cemetery, and then D D'd on out, and, you know, like I said, my walk is more like a waddle now, so I wasn't able to see who it was.
I put into that everywhere with my dumpsters, and it doesn't matter where I put them, how I try to hide them, if I lock them, they rip the lids off. Anywhere that someone sees a dumpster, if they can't get in it, they'll just throw their stuff on the ground next to it. I have two dumpsters at Little League Park. They are both completely full of someone else's garbage. Now, that being said, I would rather them put the garbage in the dumpster than next to it, so I don't have to mess with it, but it does, like I said, it doesn't matter where I put them. I'm hoping when my D P W is built, I can put them in a, in a fenced-in area, like that was talked about. So I'm hoping to kind of curb that, but at the cemetery, I don't have anywhere at the moment with a fence or.
Yeah.
Anything. We could look into that, put a fence up around them and.
I'd much rather put a camera up.
I, it was just, it was just pretty amazing. Like I said, you know, I was on the other side. I seen the guy pull in, and I seen the, the back of his truck was loaded, looked like cabinets or something. And he just shot into the dumpster, unloaded it, and, like I said, then he D D'd on out of there, and yeah, the dumpster, the dumpster was full with his stuff, you know, which takes away from the stuff that I want to put in there every now and then, so. But, no, it's just.
Right now, it's garbage season in town, and if I need those dumpsters more than anyone else needs them, I fill those dumpsters.
When is that sprinkling update?
At least twice a week with garbage from downtown, and it just. I don't even have room for my own.
Yeah, that, well, that's, 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 that's where I was going. Can I clint it at your place?
Everybody else does. I was just going to add, I know it's not supposed to be during this part, but as a commercial property owner, I have a camera on your wife's out, her window, I have a camera on our dumpster. We fight with it every day. Whether it's locked to Mike's park, it doesn't matter. It's a struggle, not just with the city, but every commercial property owner goes through the same problem in town, and it's, it's a struggle, I'll tell you. It's, it's become a big expense for us. I, you know, an extra dump fill for me is three hundred and fifty dollars for emergency pickup.
Do you turn in, do you turn any of your pictures to the police, so that we can start giving tickets? Are we giving tickets to the, because I mean, it's illegal, it's.
Sure. And if you can find out who the person is. Also, if you check with some of the stuff that they're dumping, they're not smart enough to take their name off of certain things.
If you want to go through their garbage.
We've gone out and found a person's personal information on things and went after them that way, so. If we get the information, we will pursue it. I'm not going through their garbage.
Well, it's a great segue to the fact that Friday and Saturday, May third and fourth, from eight to five, is the twenty twenty-four spring cleanup, where you can take your garbage for free, and there will be dumpsters down at the lot on River Street, and you can take your garbage and dump it for free down there.
Is there any place where residents can dump stuff without having to pay a big fee?
No, all the dumpsters around town.
No, the land, you get one, you do get one free permit a year to use the landfill, and you just need to come downtown.
The landfill can be obtained.
Yeah, one free, and it's free recycling there anytime you want to recycle, completely for free.
I don't think most people know that.
Yeah.
Probably not. We could put it out on Facebook, though.
We, we put it out every year on your water bill, that you have, at least twice a year, I believe, that you get free dumping at the landfill one time a year. I understand that.
You just see the numbers. Would cameras, would cameras be very expensive to do?
Yes, they would.
Yes, they would.
Why? Why? Trail cameras are very cheap.
Sure, trail cameras are, if you've got them in the right angle to get the identification of the person or the license plate. To be able to put a camera up that can guarantee to identify the person, because as we all know, we've seen the trail cams are a little bit fuzzy, and they're hard to identify, because if they're gonna do it at night especially, but if us, if we were gonna put a camera remotely, we would have to spend money for either cable out there or like a modem to run that cable.
And storage.
Everybody's got them on their houses. All we need is license plate numbers.
And if you need internet.
Yeah. Yeah, if you go, go to see what Comcast would charge you for home monitoring, it's.
I don't have a problem sitting down and talking with Mike, and we can look at that dumpster and see if there's something that we can do in the cemetery.
I mean, can we, is there a more, is there a better lit area that we can move it to?
Well, this was right in the middle of the day. I mean, as far as, as far as being lit up, I mean, this was like two o'clock in the afternoon. Guy just wheeled up, up to stuff.
Like Little League's getting ready, I have to leave one dumpster at Little League through the summer for their games, so that they can put their garbage in the dumpsters, but generally, nine times out of ten, they call me and they're like, hey, our dumpster's full.
Is, is that on the south, on the south side in that little parking lot? Is that where that is?
Yes, I have two of them there, because they couldn't service them down at the street. Yes, I have two of them there, because they couldn't service them down at the tree department building, wrong building.
But I mean, my son-in-laws make pretty good money, but they all got trail cams, I'm sure you got trail cams.
I don't have trail cams.
Well, both, my son-in-laws got trail cams.
His deer just getting big anyway.
All right.
And, yeah, that's all I, I just wanted to extend the meeting out a little bit longer.
We can get an estimate.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can, there are camera systems, we just did a trial with some cameras.
So we'll get together and figure out what it's gonna be and submit it to the city manager.
But I will tell you, those cameras are eleven thousand dollars a piece.
What cameras?
There are cameras that have their own system built right into them that reports.
Yeah, we're not, we're not getting.
We're not looking at nothing like that.
But that's what I'm saying, those are, we can talk about it and figure out what we can do, but the cameras that we just looked at.
Can we just hook it up to electric somehow, so that when they grab it, they get shocked?
They have solar, solar.
In a nice way, not like, not to kill them.
Vaporizers.
I'm just throwing out ideas.
Just to get their attention.
It's better than an eleven thousand dollar camera.
Larry, Larry, next time, let's keep going.
Pretty pleased tonight.
I'll try to get my camera with you next time.
I just, I wanted to remind everyone of the Chili Walk, which already got spoken of. On April twenty-seventh, there is a Buchanan Park Cleanup Day, we're cleaning the creek and we're cleaning the parks. That starts at nine AM at the Common, and at one o'clock, Lowry's has generously donated hot dogs, so there'll be hot dogs after the cleanup at the Common. Mr. Hagan, I wanted to let you know, when you start talking about the sidewalks, Tim Lynch is all over the sidewalk thing, because he sees what you see, because he tends to walk every day, and he's noticed them, and he's brought it to our attention several times, so I know that it's important to him, so. I don't have an answer for you right now, but I know that, I know that Tim is working on it. So hopefully soon, when we start doing the budget, we'll have a better idea of what money we can lay aside for sidewalk help. I think that's all I have, that was a fast meeting, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
There's support, can we roll call?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
You're adjourned.
Hey, Jerry, can I talk to you before you leave?
Then it goes for another forty-five minutes, so Sean, it's my look on my face. Because the last time you did that, we were here for.
The championship basketball, you know?